Welcome to our meeting. Pass the issue of stand and join us for the play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Duranty.
Link with present.
Duranty is present. Folks is absent, excused. Rappaport?
Present.
Richards?
Present.
Sharp?
Present.
Statchow?
Present.
And Thompson is absent, excused. We have a call.
Approval of minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Rappaport.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Richards. Roll call please.
One second. Roll call vote to approve the May 3, 2023 meeting minutes. Duranty?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Abstain.
And Statchow?
Yes.
Minister of Approve.
At this time of our meeting, if there's anything that's not on the agenda, that would be the time to bring before us. But I see you gentlemen are all here for the same reason, so we will move into our first case, which is Case 1627C, proposed site plan approval for proposed industrial building 38272, Bruzy Drive. Mr. Ayub.
Thank you, Chairman. This subject property, well, this subject area contains three properties that I believe have been combined at this point, but they're still showing up as three parcels identified in yellow on your screen. These are in the Railway Industrial Subdivision that's located south of Ford Road, on the east side of that railroad line you see running towards the bottom left-hand corner. It's tucked between the Bruzy Drive, well, Hicks Road there on your left-hand side and that residential on your right-hand side. The property is zoned I-1 light industrial. Today, the applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct a 12,000-square-foot building on the site to be used for warehousing and office space. The proposed building is in that southeast corner of the property, in the rear corner of the property. There's a garage that exists there today, along with a gravel area that will be demolished. The garage will encompass that red space, and there will be a concrete pad, a large concrete pad, that will be constructed or installed to accommodate the warehousing operation. Properties on the north, south, and west are all zoned industrial and developed with a variety of industrial office-type uses. And then property on the east, over here, you can kind of see the dwellings, are zoned R-5 single-family residential and developed with single-family dwellings. The master plan and future land use indication is industrial for this site. A lot of the site area, with the exception of the construction area, is going to stay the same, so site access is maintained with three access points, 1, 2, 3, along the Bruzy Drive there. Parking is still sufficient, exceeding the zoning ordinance requirement. This is a prefab building, I believe, being constructed out of metal paneling materials. Renderings on your screen. Along the easterly residential property line there, there's an existing wall, kind of see it on the site plan here, well, maybe not, but there is also a landscape buffer as well, containing some trees, evergreen trees specifically, and as I mentioned, in addition to the six-foot-tall Masonry screening wall. All of the setbacks in height and lot coverage are being complied with, with the construction of the new warehouse building. It's noteworthy to mention that the site is being improved as a result of the removal of the existing grass area and the old garage and being replaced with concrete pavement. I only say this because in the past, we've received some complaints with, from the adjacent residents, residents, with some dust being kind of flown up onto their yard and cars and things like that, so I think this would be an improvement. I had the conversation with a couple of the residents over there, informing them of this as well. The administration's recommending approval. The petitioners are here in the audience today. Be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. The ICR petitioners are here. Would you like to come forward and introduce yourselves? You can all come, or one come, or whatever you choose.
My name is TJ Totai. I'm the owner of the property. This is Art, his architect, and that's Alex, the engineer.
Okay. Any questions at all? Mr. Ayub's comments and...
Not at the moment. I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Well, we will open it up to the Commission. Commissioner? Yes, Commissioner Staff.
Okay. Hi. Good evening. Yes. Just, can you tell us, for those people who really don't know too much about your business, how long you've been in business and what exactly it is that you do there in the community?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we're a transportation and logistics company. For the past 12 years, we've been servicing Ford GM and Chrysler, all their expedite needs from Mexico all the way to Canada. So, we also have a facility in Laredo and work with Mexican partners. We bring the freight in, you know, whether it's expedite hot shots, you know, right before charter. So, pretty much, we're last point before the freight goes in the air. We bring it in, we usually take it directly to the plant, but there's times we have to move with faster vehicles once it comes to Michigan, so we have to offload it from the 53 footers, load it into the smaller vehicles, whether it's a 24, 26, or cargo van, because it depends on how fast the freight, the parts are needed. So, that's why, you know, like, in the past, we have been, you know, using other companies that we work with, but that's also cutting into the time that we need to make it to final delivery on time. So, we decided to put this warehouse together there, to be able to help us accommodate our customers, you know, with, because a lot of our freight is just in time, you know, and we just don't have the time to, you know, go into different warehouses.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from the Commissioner? Yes. Commissioner Rappaport.
So, when I was looking over the proposal, the warehouse looks fine. I wanted to briefly address the dust issue that the administration mentioned. In design criteria of the proposal I have before me, the last bullet point mentions that the site will be approved as a result of the removal of existing gravel areas that will be replaced with the building and concrete pavement. But it's not clear, like, your property is quite large, it's expansive, and I think that's part of the dust issue. I'm just wondering how much of it is going to be covered in concrete at this time, and I guess I had suggestions for additional dust abatement if it's not going to be fully covered.
Okay. So, to the note, years ago, when we had the issues with the neighbors regarding the dust, you know, so when we initially bought the property, the property used to be a construction company, so there was gravel all over, you know, not just for, you know, on the pavement side with gravel, but also there is like, there was like stacks of gravel all over, different types of material. So, as we've been cleaning up, a lot of things opened up, and it created the opportunity for the wind to, you know, to go into the neighbor. When this happened, we only had the wall in the back. We did not have, because we put a fence on top of the wall as well, to be able to make that, you know, to be able to put the, to stop things from floating to the front. We also, you know, put all the trees in the back, by the back wall, so none of that existed. We also have paved, you know, which, I don't know exactly the square footage, you know, but we've paved both centers, because there's three rows of parking, row one, row two, row three, so the center coming in U, it's all paved, and also the entrance was just to be gravel, it's all paved, you know, so that has eliminated the dust issue, you know.
So, your comfortable and your neighbors report to you that they are no longer concerned with the dust you're providing?
This, the last time, the last time we had, as of, and don't quote me, but it was at least, this car has been at least, 2017, so at least six or seven years ago, so this might have started eight years ago, eight or nine years ago. It might, you know, maybe a little bit longer, I don't remember the exact dates, but as of minimum six, seven years ago, they were fine with it. We had a discussion, in fact, we had meetings in the city hall with Mayor Wild at the time, and with the neighbors, and that's, you know, the resolution we came up with, to pave all this, put the trees, do the fencing, and after that, you know, we had no other issues with them. I have not checked with them in the past years, because, and we have not had, you know, because of being that, there's no direct access for me to them or them to us, because we have to go all the way around, so there's really no communication that allows us to have, you know. We have not had any, you know, issues with them.
So, I certainly don't want to make this a condition of approval, but maybe I tell you a little bit of a story. I'm going to take everybody's minutes away from them. So, I graduated from Albion College. While I was there, the, they had a parking lot that they wanted to create, but it was kind of unstable, so what they did is they let, they laid down aggregate for a number of years, and what that did is that kept the, that prepared the ground for eventual upgrade to a paving, and it also avoided any dust issues or mud issues that might actually be created. It was cost-effective for the university and allowed them to move forward with something that was much more stable and long-term. I'm suggesting that maybe something like that helps if there is a continuing issue, but I'm also suggesting that maybe, as you guys move forward into this construction, it might be a good neighborly thing to reach out again to the residences that are abutting your zone, and just check in with them and be good neighbors and see if they have any continuing concerns that you can address.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, stop by and see them next week, you know, and explain to them what we have going on, so that way, we're on the same page.
As a Westland resident, I personally would feel very, 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 very gratified if you took any steps in that direction.
Absolutely. So, this is kind of...
So, with that, I don't believe I have anything. Oh, wait a minute. One more thing. The wall that you mentioned, is it in decent repair still?
It's a brick wall, you know, it's painted, it's...
Still standing?
Still standing, yeah.
It's not dilapidated?
No, not going to, unless I have a driver going through it, it should be fine.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Motion's in order? Yes. Okay. Commissioner Richard.
I move to send case number 1627C, proposed site plan approval for a proposed industrial building at 38272, Bruzy Drive, to City Council with a recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations. Just now, sorry.
Same? Yeah.
We've got to pull this...
No, there wasn't a public hearing.
The second one is.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Richards, supported by Commissioner Rappaport. Roll call. You're on, sir.
Thank you. Roll call vote to approve case number 1627C. Duranty?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Did I skip anyone? Statchow, sorry.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you for increasing your business efforts there and moving forward, and we're happy to have you continue, and good luck when you go to City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the schedule for next meeting?
Yes.
City Council, next meeting. I'll contact you in the morning.
Yes, she's coming. She's on the way.
Can you make a note?
Okay. We will move into our next case, which is the redoing and rebuilding and reconstitution of our zoning ordinance. At this time, we have, we're fortunate to have Mr. Adam Young from the project manager from Wade Trim, that will go through all of this, and Mr. Ayub, did you want to add anything prior to that?
Nope. I just wanted to say that Adam Young is going to provide us with the presentation, brief presentation, just kind of outlining what we've done and how we got here and how we're going to be moving forward.
Adam Young, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. So, this is a project that's been going on for some time. It is a zoning ordinance update. It includes a comprehensive review and amendments to both the text of the city's currently adopted zoning ordinance, as well as the zoning district's map. The city, it's been at least 20 years since the city has undertaken a comprehensive update like this. Certainly, changes piecemeal and small changes have been made over the years, but not in this fashion where we appointed a city steering committee to lead the effort, where we've had a multi-month, multi-year process to work through the ordinance, to evaluate, review, and just consider what kind of changes are appropriate. And of course, we know that things have changed over the last 20 years, and so this zoning ordinance update, among other goals, was, has, is updated to basically be in line with contemporary best practices that relates to zoning. This is a project that was moved forward with the support of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and so the principles of the MEDC and zoning best practices were in the back of our minds and used as a foundation ultimately to help drive some of the changes that are being recommended. The schedule, as I said, a steering committee meeting met numerous occasions over the last 18 months or so. The first part of the project was a kickoff effort, educational effort, fact-finding effort. Ultimately, it led to the completion of our zoning ordinance audit. That was essentially our detailed review. That was confirmed by the steering committee as yes, these are the changes that we'd like to move forward with. And then, the second part of the project was basically moving forward with those changes, developing the ordinance amendment language. We did engage the public through opportunities. Those steering committee meetings were open to the public, but we also had a virtual engagement session and survey, and then, as I mentioned at the beginning, we did have a leadership and educational outreach session as well. We, tonight is the public hearing, so before the city may adopt any change to the zoning ordinance, the city's planning commission, that's you, is required to hold a public hearing. And so, that is this evening. Notices were sent out and published in the newspaper in accordance with the Zoning Enabling Act. The public hearing tonight is an opportunity for anyone to share what they feel about this, these proposed changes. Ultimately, after the public hearing is closed this evening, the planning commission, you may move forward with the proposed ordinance changes by making a recommendation to the city council. The city council, being law, the zoning ordinance being law, has final authority for any changes or amendments to a zoning ordinance. But I did just want to go through some of the bigger-picture changes that are being incorporated into this zoning ordinance. The draft zoning ordinance is available on the city website currently for any citizen to review. You, if you look through that ordinance, you'll see that it is completely reorganized into five different parts and articles. We're looking at, you know, these changes to make it much more user-friendly and more accessible for folks, to be able to quickly identify, okay, I care about accessory buildings, and so it's going to be easy for me, or more easier, I should say, to be able to find those sections in the zoning ordinance. As it relates to the zoning district map, we are doing some renaming and consolidation of zoning districts. For example, there are six current residential zoning districts, or six current single-family residential zoning districts. We're looking to merge two of the residential districts into one. There really is no material difference in terms of the uses allowed in the R-1 and R-2 districts currently. The only differences are in the minimum width and minimum lot size, and even that difference is fairly minor, and so that was one proposed change. Another change that we're looking at is eliminating the current CB4. It's a kind of a heavier commercial zoning district, so we're looking to eliminate that, and all CB4-zoned properties presently would be essentially changed to the CB3, general commercial district. And some of the uses that are allowed currently in the CB4 are either going to be diverted to special land uses in the CB3 district or permitted uses in the I-1 light industrial district. Were additional kind of enhancements to the zoning ordinance, we're incorporating into the residential districts, commercial districts, and industrial districts separate use matrices or matrices, to be able to quickly see the allowed uses, and they're categorized by residential uses, institutional, recreational, the different categories there. Within the residential districts, we're looking at adding two family dwellings as a special land use in the single-family residential districts. We're looking at adding three family dwellings as a potential use that would be allowed in the R-3 district. And then, we're adding some additional contemporary uses that currently aren't either accounted for in our zoning ordinance. We're looking specifically at adult daycare facilities, childcare facilities, and other residential care facilities, like assisted living and convalescent homes. We're looking at adding also the addition of institutional, recreational, medical uses as a special land use that would be allowed in our multiple-family residential districts. And some other enhancements, including the addition of design standards for single- and two-family dwellings and three-family dwellings, townhouse dwellings, and multiple-family residential developments. Really just looking to improve the overall appearance, quality, and character of our residential areas. In the business districts, we're, you'll see that we're incorporating an allowance for residential uses to be better integrated within commercial districts, such as allowing upper-story residential uses above, say, a ground-level commercial retail or office building, and also adding more opportunities for mixed use within our commercial districts. We've added some contemporary uses that were presently not addressed in the zoning ordinance, such as production facilities with retail components, sometimes they're called makerspaces, or microbreweries, wineries, distilleries. Retail tobacco, hookah, and vape shops were addressed, defined, in our allowed, in the zoning ordinance in appropriate districts. Similarly, smoking lounges. We did create a new zoning district called the City Center District. That City Center District aligns with the City Center Tifa Transformation Plan, so this was an outside plan. It was done by the city's Tifa District, two or three years ago, I believe, and in that district plan, it outlined, hey, we need to make these zoning ordinance changes in order to implement and allow for the vision that we would like to see. The city center is essentially the Westland Mall and the immediately surrounding areas. And so, this new City Center District that we've drafted and is up for your consideration tonight, would allow for that development to occur in accordance with the Tifa vision for the city center. And as I mentioned, we eliminated, we're proposing to eliminate the CB4 district. With regard to the, all of the commercial districts, we're adding additional design standards, similarly to, as we did for the recreational uses. We're proposing to increase our design, aesthetics, materials, building orientation, and other features of our commercial districts to be able to improve the overall appearance. Some of the changes as it relates to the design standards, for example, in the CB2 and CB3 zoning districts, allowing for only one, either single or double-loaded row of parking between the road and the building, so that we can have buildings, and this wouldn't prevent buildings from being closer to the road, so that we can have a different feel, better connection between the buildings and the roads, so that the buildings are not separated from the road and the sidewalks by vast areas of off-street parking. We're looking in the City Center District and in our Ford Road Overlay District to have a slightly, an increased allowance to have taller buildings. And the City Center District, in certain locations, is as much as five stories. In the Ford Road Overlay District, an allowance to potentially have up to four stories, depending on, they'd still have the meat setbacks and things of that nature, but it just opens up the door for enhanced business activity within those districts. Throughout the ordinance, you'll see that we've added increased flexibility. Flexibility as it relates to the interpretation of use lists. If somebody suggests a use that isn't included in your use matrix, you, the planning commission, have the ability to potentially allow for that. Flexibility in landscaping requirements. Flexibility in off-street parking requirements. Just giving you the power to be able to, as unique circumstances are presented in front of you, to be able to modify some of the requirements to account for those unique We're looking at streamlining our development review procedures. For example, the site plan review process, the planned unit development review process, and the special land use review process. We're looking to change the authority, the final authority, for the approval of site plans, to have that rest with the planning commission, that it would not have to have that additional step to go beyond to the city council. This is one of the specific recommendations from the MEDC as a best practice for zoning, to give you the power, you are, folks who are trained well and have staff to support you, to make good decisions, and giving you the authority to make those final determinations on site plans. Special land uses, planned unit developments would still come through you, but ultimately be adopted by the city council. We've addressed some of the things that have occurred as far as changes to state law, changes to federal laws, and so you'll see throughout the proposed zoning ordinance that there are tweaks, or revisions, or additions, or modifications to issues such as wireless communication, adult and childcare facilities, sidewalk cafes as more of a contemporary use that wasn't appropriately addressed in your current ordinance, alcohol manufacturing facilities such as the brew pubs, breweries, wineries, distilleries, adding additional standards for trash receptacles and screening between commercial uses and residential uses, for example. We've accounted for in our off-street parking, the requirement to provide bicycle parking facilities at sites as new site plans come before you. The allowance to count electric vehicle parking spaces as part of the required parking that a business would provide. Look, we've added new exterior lighting standards. We've given you, the planning commission and the council, additional discretion as it relates to special land uses by providing you with more and concrete review standards for special land uses. We've clarified the criteria that the zoning board of appeals would use related to variances, specifically the different criteria that they would use when reviewing a use variance versus a dimensional variance. And we've added a new opportunity, which is consistent with state law, for conditional rezoning within the city. So, that's a broad summary of the amendments. As I said, the draft has been available online on the city website for some time. Actually, when the notices were sent out, the draft was made available on the website. And I'd be glad to go over any questions that you might have this evening, but ultimately, our job tonight is to hear from the public, if there are any, and then you can deliberate after the public hearing.
Very good. Very good. Our public is, did not arrive today, so we will open it right directly to the commissioners. Our, our public is, uh, did not arrive today, so we will open right directly to the commissioners, uh, for comments and questions and suggestions. Uh, why don't we, we, Sam, why don't we start with you, and we'll work right down the, the line?
I'm fine, Mr. ...
You're fine, okay. Mr. Rappaport?
Uh, so I do have a few questions. The first is, uh, I'm sure that we're, uh, that we're prepared to answer. Uh, I wanted to be, uh, fairly clear about, uh, this proposal as it's proposed before us, and how it relates to the, uh, to the sign issue that we discussed in, uh, in, uh, steering committee and, more recently, in, uh, in study session, and the, uh, the tree ordinance. I believe that any, uh, that any motion that we would make to, uh, to move this forward, we'd need to address those two issues. Can you please, uh, can you please, uh, elucidate?
Sure. Yeah. Uh, so the tree ordinance and the sign ordinance that are part of the entire zoning ordinance of the city still need to be reviewed by, uh, our legal team, and that's the intention. Um, so hopefully, other than those two items, nothing else will be touched in the zoning ordinance if, uh, the planning commission recommends approval tonight. But yeah, those, uh, two items are sensitive items as it relates to some court issues that have been determined, um, throughout the Supreme Court and also, well, not the Suprem-, yeah, the Supreme Court and also...
Supreme Court and other, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, the sign ordinance case from Canton Township. So, we're, we're, we're needing a closer...
Which we would not like to follow, follow, follow up the same way that Canton has.
Correct. So any motion would, um, if the motion is to recommend adoption, it would be, uh, recommend adoption, um, subject to further legal review for the sign ordinance and the tree ordinance.
With, uh, with respect, I believe I have language that, uh, that I'd like to add if, uh, if I could be granted the ability to make the motion when it comes forward.
Right.
Uh, other than that, uh, the, the other issue that I wanted to speak on, uh, so, uh, Adam, thank you very much for your, uh, for your time and effort on this. One of our, our last meetings in the steering commission, uh, I mentioned that I had a continuing, potentially non, not imperative issue with the, uh, with the, with the, uh, the Ford Road Overlay District, in the name. And I heard you in your presentation, uh, once again, referred to the Ford Road Overlay District. Uh, I did not know if you were retaining that as a, uh, as a, as a designation for that, for anybody who's watching at home. My issue is that the Ford Road Overlay District, uh, sounds a whole lot like fraud when you use the anagram, F-R-O-D. And it just, I, I feel like it could be, the overlay terminology there might be unnecessary and might be speaking something that we don't intend to speak. And just simply eliminating it might have been a, uh, a good choice. I don't know if that's, if that's in the proposal as part of the change or not.
Yes, I can speak to that. Based on your request, and I think it makes sense, the, the F-R-O-D, Ford Road Overlay District, has been changed in the draft to, so the acronym now is F-O-R-D, even though it's still Ford Road Overlay District. But it's re, now referred to, uh, when it's shortened, as F-O, the F-O-R-D District, just like the CCD would be the City Center District. The F-O-R-D is the Ford Road Overlay District in the draft.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for, for addressing that. And with that, until, uh, a motion is in order, I see the floor.
Commissioner Folks?
Yes. First, let me apologize for not making the, um, review earlier today. I worked in Troy, so it took me a little while to get here. So you may have already answered these questions during that time. The first one is on the residential districts, and that you're, we're adding two family dwellings and then three family dwellings. Would that be like, um, duplexes or one-level apartment-type condo-type? Is that what that means?
Yeah, so, I mean, traditionally, when you think of a two-family dwelling, you'd think of a duplex, uh, so attached, you know, one side is, you know, basically, one side and the other are two different, uh, dwellings. A triplex, uh, could be a three-attached units. It could be, you know, one level but three different units, or it could be some sort of a configuration, uh, say, a single-family home that was, one single-family has been converted to three distinct living units. And that's probably the more common, um, application of that. Uh, a two-family dwelling could also be a former single-family dwelling that was reconfigured to become a, basically, a two-unit structure. In the, in the purpose of, of allowing, again, this was in line with the best practices, is to be able to in, encourage and allow for additional housing within the city of Westland. Often, a two-family unit or a three-family unit is a more affordable option. And, and today, we all know that affordable housing is a, is a real concern, and we want to be able to be accommodating, uh, to, to, you know, a diverse group of people and people with different economic spectrums and who some can afford different homes, some can afford other homes. And so, we want to be able to have a, a diverse housing stock, um, that can attract a broad population. And that's one avenue that we can take. A small change can open the door for, uh, some of these developments to occur in our city.
Okay, my second question was, um, were there very many comments on the online version when that was published? Did anyone make any comments?
Zero.
Zero.
There was a lady that checked it out, um, and commented that the zoning map ordinance was broken. Other than that, we did not receive any comments.
So like tonight?
Yeah. Well, I mean, zoning ordinances are typically like, yeah, technical, and so, unlike master plan updates or special plans, or like that naturalized plan we get, we don't, there's not usually a lot of, compared the two.
Okay, boring to the average citizen, probably. Thank you, that was, that was, um, my questions.
And just, just for thought, we do have four-unit family residents in our city right now, in the Norway District. They're saying that they're one-story, four units. So they're already established in the city.
It's, we could look into that a little bit. It's very possible that those might be in one of our different zoning districts.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it could be in our multifamily residential district.
Okay. Very good.
So that would allow for even more, more units...
Right.
On one property.
Very good, very good. Commissioner Stackow?
Yes. Okay, once again, uh, thank you, Adam, for all your hard work and, uh, yeah, I had a couple points that, uh, just comments, actually, and, uh, on the residential, um, part of things. The fact that, uh, we are in the business district going to allow residential, uh, above the businesses, which would require, uh, you know, give us the opportunity to maybe have these nice lofts that you often see available in other cities. And it definitely, you know, it, it goes along with the affordable housing, as well as giving a different character to the city. So I think that, uh, is a good point there. Also, too, in our commercial district, uh, the five-story, uh, buildings, I think, will make a big difference as well, because there's many of the businesses that would like to have a little more room or more, uh, stories that they can work with. And I think that's going to be a, an excellent feature for us to have, you know, as, uh, we go forth. And, uh, last but not least is our sidewalk cafes. Uh, I've, I've always enjoyed that, and I think many people do. So, uh, having an opportunity to, uh, allow that in the city, weather permitting, uh, that, uh, will work, uh, as well. Will there be any criterias, though, for the sidewalk cafes that, uh, would go along with our zoning?
Yes, we do have, uh, specific criteria for sidewalk cafes. Uh, we, I agree that we, we want to open up the door to allow them and encourage them. But at the same time, we need to make sure that, uh, people are protected, you know, especially from between the sidewalk, people sitting at the cafe next to a parking lot, for example. So, that needs to be addressed. Also, if they happen to be on a public sidewalk, you know, how do we address that issue? So yes, there are standards for sidewalk cafes, built into the proposed draft.
All right, very good. Okay, and that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Richards?
I just want to thank Adam again for coming in and talking with us. Um, I actually asked my questions in the study sessions, and it was about the, um, parking spaces, and he covered all that, so I'm good. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Well, Adams, I want to also thank you. The expertise you brought to these meetings and to the city is excellent. It's something that we would have, speaking for myself, that have been a struggle. And you have that knowledge inside you, and you brought it with you, and so, thank you.
I appreciate that. You're welcome.
We will open it up for a motion. Commissioner Rappaport?
Prior to the motion, I believe, uh, Mr. Duranty has...
No, it's, it was answered.
It was answered.
Very good.
Uh, with that, uh, motion is in order. Is that correct, Mr. Chairperson? Fantastic. I've moved to close the public hearing, away from the normal rules. Refer to the proposed comprehensive update to the Westland zoning ordinance and zoning map to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to a review and advice from Westland City Legal on updated language pertaining to signs consistent with the ruling in Gilbert, and pertaining to Westland's, Westland's tree ordinances, considering the recent rulings in reference to Canton, Michigan, whose embattled tree ordinance is quite similar to Westland's.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Rappaport, uh, supported by Commissioner Richards. Roll call, please.
Okay, um, roll call vote to recommend adoption, subject to stated conditions on record. Duranty?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
And Statchow?
Yes.
Motion is in order.
Mr. Ayub, do you have anything in addition for this this evening?
I do not. We'll see each other on August second.
Okay, I'm, uh, motion's in order for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
The floor. Motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by, uh, Commissioner Folks. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.